Good evening and welcome to the October 13th, 2022, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Here.
Lee Placido.
Here.
Vaughn. Thompson. Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Dupone.
Here.
Carswell. Spiegelman.
Here.
Bo.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Bahe.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here.
Please note that Commissioners Brodsky and Vaughn are excused, as is Commissioner Thompson, who has recently experienced the death in his close family. May we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the ten to the republic for which it stands, one nation for our under God, indivisible.
Invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I have just one short announcement tonight. I am pleased to share with those in attendance and those who will be viewing this meeting that Abington Township was named by Money Magazine to be one of the top 50 places to live in the United States of America, ranking 24th on the list. And I think that's a testament to the hard work of the township staff, working closely with the Township Board of Commissioners to ensure that we provide a high quality of life for residents. And I think so congratulations are in order to the township staff who work very hard every day. So, thank you. Okay, we will now move to public comments on items on the agenda.
They're on the agenda.
Okay.
You're talking about parks, you're talking about the street. Yes.
No, no. If this is specific to the agenda item, we'll talk about it here. Okay.
Quality of life as well.
Where's the microphone? Okay, I'm sorry. In spring 2021, I called Tom Hecker for assistance with blight and unsafe conditions in Abington. Tom Hecker refused to give his assistance. He instead highly recommended I start a petition to create a positive change. This was an odd recommendation considering Mr. Hecker is a commissioner with significant influence. I do remember Josh Shapiro even coming to my door, telling me to vote for you, which I did. I have since had to have collected over 700 resident names on two petitions. Both petitions were covered in The Times Chronicle. The petitions were even signed by Commissioners Spiegelman and Weingard. Abington residents overwhelmingly want maintenance of Abington Township to be a top priority. Mr. Manfredi and the Commissioners, it seems like the Commissioners too, have an agenda entirely focused on crowding Abington with more and more and more land development. All comers are welcomed by this administration. Land develop, most land development proposals are approved by the Commissioners. Zoning is even changed to meet the needs of land developers. Resident needs have no importance. Commercial code enforcement does not happen in Abington. Even a restaurant owner said that there is no reason to maintain commercial areas in Abington. After all, the township does not care. I need to ask, what has happened with these petitions? Is a petition with only five sentences and a whole lot of names still being reviewed for content? Why does Mr. Manfredi continue to get the support of the Commissioners? Under Mr. Manfredi's leadership, Abington Township is no longer well regarded. Under his leadership, township's street maintenance and commercial code enforcement are of no importance. Residents are, residents' concerns are never considered. I am not the only one who doesn't get returned phone calls or emails or hung up on. Even Briar Bush Nature Center has become a shadow of its former self. The Briar Bush is short staff members and the necessary township funding. Why Commissioners, have you allowed Mr. Manfredi to eviscerate this township gem? Why is Mr. Manfredi the township manager?
Ms. Cabell.
I'm speaking.
You have 20 seconds and then you are done.
No. Mr. Manfredi does not live in Abington. Mr. Manfredi does not even live in any of the nearby townships. Mr. Manfredi is always, always unavailable to meet with Abington residents. Much of the time, Mr. Manfredi doesn't come to work. Perhaps the commute is difficult. I don't know, but I've called over and over.
Ms. Cabell.
And Mr. Manfredi isn't in the township building.
Your time has expired.
Who don't want to hear the truth?
I want to hear the truth. And the truth is.
Ever called.
The truth is that prior to this meeting, you were informed that there is a meeting being scheduled for you with the Solicitor.
When I'm standing here, which it should have been sent to me way before, I'm standing here.
The meeting is taking place.
Where's the call? You never made it.
The meeting is taking.
I want to finish.
Ms. Cabell, you are over time.
This is important to this township.
Ms. Cabell, thank you for your comments.
Stop silencing people. Do I have to come back next month and finish?
You have, you have three minutes.
I don't believe I can stop the three minutes.
You have three minutes, you have 3 minutes and 35 seconds.
Mr. Manfredi has created a hostile work environment in Abington.
Cabell, I'm asking you now to take your seat.
Even former employees are afraid to speak out.
Please take your seat.
No, you never called. You haven't done us anything. I am sorry I ever voted for you. You do not deserve to hold this position.
Ms. Cabell, your time has expired.
I don't believe I'm even going to get a call for an appointment because I didn't get one last time.
Ms. Cabell, your time has expired. Please take your seat.
Why? You don't listen.
The next step is we'll recess the meeting.
I'll be back next month to finish.
That is your right. Other, other folks in the room who wish to speak to matters on the agenda? On the agenda, Mr. Rooney?
There isn't probably very many people to speak, but they're rushed off the podium. Good luck with your three minutes. Oh, I would finish the three minutes at the end of the meeting.
So I'd like to talk about the comment section. So will you give me that time now or later?
The comment section?
On the agenda.
You can, you can speak to that.
I can, okay. I'm Joe Rooney. I live in Ardsley. And in the board policy, just to highlight at the beginning of the comment section, it says, state your question to the presiding officer. And then don't disrupt the public meeting, which several of you all were interrupting that lady. You don't have, the president, I'm pretty sure, is the one who controls the meeting. So your comments are all out of order. And then exercise restraint and sound judgment in avoiding the use of profane language and maligning of others. So those are the comments that are printed at each agenda, and we're expected to live by them or abide by them. So at the last meeting, a citizen asked a question about public safety and public actions of a commissioner. No names were mentioned. The question was directed to the president. The president recognized another commissioner to comment. We'll call him Commissioner Tinder. Commissioner Tinder decided to attack the citizen by name.
That is completely out of line.
What is?
What you're doing.
Attacked the citizen by name for having the temerity to ask about a fight that occurred between, after leaving a bar in Chankin Town. A second commissioner, we'll call him Commissioner.
So, Mr. Rooney, this actually isn't about the agenda this evening? You're harkening back.
The comment section.
You're harkening back to, you're playing, replaying your version of a transcript from a previous meeting. That is not what this comment period is about.
What, that's what I asked before I started. Can I tell me I can't continue?
You said you wanted to make a comment about the comment section of the agenda.
I highlighted, exercise restraint and sound judgment in avoiding the use of profane language and the maligning of others, and talked to the president. And also about not disrupting public meetings. So not disrupting them is what we get from the board. The maligning is what happened at that meeting. I want to explain what happened and try and, and that's what I'm talking about. So can I continue or not?
That would come at the end of the meeting, which is.
Okay.
This is about what is before the board this evening to vote upon. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak about agenda items? And if not, we'll turn to Zoom. Okay. There is one now.
Ryan Valderrama, you're unmeted.
Hi, how are you this evening? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I wish to speak on the parking at Teg Avenue. That's on the traffic section.
Sure.
So I live at 2321 Teg Avenue. The proposal is for two-hour parking for the first five houses. We are back in the middle of that. We have dealt with Enterprise for over five years at this point, trying with customers of theirs parking on our street and taking up public parking. I wanted to use an example of today, actually, about three hours ago. I came home with groceries, and there was a gentleman parking in front of our house while there was plenty of parking available at Enterprise, unloading his car and walking down to rent a car. I politely asked him to move his car to the provided parking, and it resulted in a mild argument that ended with a gentleman moving. I was polite and civil the entire time, but this is just something we deal with almost daily. And I do have an elderly grandmother who comes and visits me at least once a month. So we do need to make sure we do have parking available for her. I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of the situation we deal with daily. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Do we have anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Okay. We will move forward to the consent agenda. And before doing so, I want to announce that Item C on the consent agenda is being moved forward to new business and will be discussed at that time. And with that, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Bahe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of the consent agenda. Solicitor has Items A and B, D, E, and F on the agenda. And I say move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed. We have no unfinished business this evening. We will turn toward new business. And again, I call upon Board Vice President Matt Bahe.
The first item of new business is, was the item removed from the consent agenda? It's a motion to award a contract to G&amp;B Construction to complete the CDBG-funded Old Welsh Road Sidewalk Improvement Project in the amount of $350,000. I say move.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, but I'm going to turn to Solicitor Gallagher.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. In conversations with the lowest responsible bidder this afternoon, it was made, township staff was made aware that they are going to be unable to complete the project within the 90-day timeframe. So they have asked for an extension of time in which to complete the projects. My understanding is that the project would be able to be completed in the spring. The board has a few options this evening, and it is up to the board how they would like to proceed. They can grant the extension as requested by the low bidder. The board can decide to reject the bids and rebid the project. Or the board can proceed forward with a notice of intent to award this evening without the extension and require the low bidder to execute the contract as set forth in the bid documents.
Are there comments or questions for members of the board? Vice President Bahe.
How many bids we have for the project?
There were four.
And what are the amounts?
I knew that was going to be your next question, so just give me one second. So the low bidder was G&amp;B Construction Group Incorporated for $349,963.50. The next low bidder was Albert G. Cipollini Jr. &amp; Sons at $406,806.
My recommendation is to grant the extension.
Grant the extension. Other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioners Weingrad.
All right, so it's our choice then. We could go with the next lowest bid.
So you would issue the notice of intent to award to the low bidder, which is the G&amp;B Construction Group. If they refuse to sign, then the township could proceed to move against the bid bond that was submitted and simultaneously award to the next lowest bidder.
Okay, so it wouldn't require board approval again to go to the next lowest bidder?
It would come back in front of you. We would, we'd be back Friday next month with that, that recommendation.
All right.
Because again, you would have the option to reject all bids if you'd like to.
I mean, I agree. I'm inclined to allow the extension. I think just the time period, by the time the next bidder comes online, could be 90 days anyway, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And at a higher price.
Right.
Commissioner Vaughn, you have your hand up?
Yes, my question is, why are they, are they saying why? They're not going to be able to get it done within the 90 days? Is it a supply issue? Or is it like, I don't understand. What is the reason that they're saying they can't get it done in the allotted time?
Unfortunately, this issue came up late this afternoon, so I'm not sure what the specific reasons were. I believe it had to do with other projects that were taking longer than anticipated during the time between the bid was submitted and now, but I'm speculating a little bit on that.
So if we were to go with another bidder, I understand that it could make the timeframe even longer, but if we were to go with the next lowest bidder, we don't know if it could be done in that 90-day timeframe still?
They would have 90 days from the date that the contract with them was signed. So it would not be 90 days from tomorrow. It would be 90 days from the date we signed the contract with them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just one point of clarification. We are recommending that if the, the board does proceed to grant the extension, that that be conditioned on our confirmation that it does not put the township in any jeopardy of losing any funding because of grant timelines that were subject to.
Yeah. I'm sorry, how long was the extension?
They want their, they want to complete the project in the spring.
So six months, nine months?
It would, I believe that they're asking until the end of May.
That's a long time.
March. We could, you could also grant an additional 90 days tonight. And if they need additional time beyond that, they could come back for another request.
Commissioner Schreiber.
Are we guaranteed the same price? Because we don't know what prices are going to be in six months or whatever.
They are stuck with the price that they bid.
That they bid, okay.
Are we allowed to negotiate in terms of like of the bond? That if they default 90 days, that we would have the money to pay the next bidder? Is there a way to do that?
That would be if, that would be a choosing to go forward without granting the extension. The bond only comes into play if they're in violation of the contract terms. So the bid bond protects the township if they back out of the bid that they've submitted. The performance bond guarantees the performance pursuant to the terms of the contract. So if they're within that 90 days or whatever extension is granted, we would not be able to move on the performance bond.
But we can't ask for a larger bond based on.
You cannot.
Okay.
Commissioner Bowman.
So do we need to pass this motion and then pass a separate motion granting the extension? Or will, can we?
You could do it all as one motion. I'll give you the phrasing if that's the direction the board wants to go.
I support the extension also.
Okay. Other comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, President Hecker. Um, Solicitor Gallagher, you said they, they would like to, they would like to have till the end of May to complete or to begin?
The timeline that they gave was the spring. If they were granted an additional 90 days, that would give them till approximately March.
I mean, I'm in favor of granting it. I, I hope there's something we could do to even, you know, informally cajole them to get start, you know, to, to get started and get it done a little earlier when we get into the spring. Because the weather is certainly becomes more favorable for that kind of work much, much earlier than what they're talking about. But I'm, I'm in favor as well. Thank you.
Can we confirm which ward this is? Or is it multiple?
Ms. Hamm.
100 block, are we talking?
Hi, it's, it's Ward 5.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that there might be a couple feet that are in Ward 10, but it is overwhelmingly Ward 5. The contractor, and I apologize for the late notice on this, Commissioners, we got notification on this at about 3:45 this afternoon that the contractor wasn't going to be able to meet the deadlines that were set forth in the contract. They are expecting to begin work in March of 2023. I believe it's 60 days in the contract under which that they have to complete the work if we were to grant that extension. The reasons for the need for the extension is the, the weather that we've been having this fall. The contractor, with all of the wet, the wet weather that's been having, happening, they just haven't been able to complete the work that they had before them already without, without delay. And they are not, not wanting to start the work and then have open sidewalks all winter. It's just a safety hazard and not something that they recommend.
That makes sense. Commissioner Vaughn.
I'm not comfortable with this for my ward because I know this issue has been going on for a while now, and COVID stopped it previously. I personally, I know everybody has their own opinion on what we should do. I personally think that if they're saying that they can't get to it because they have other projects in front of them, who's to say that the other projects aren't going to supersede us again in March? So I'm just not, I'm not okay with this.
Well, Commissioner, if the, if there is an extension, then if they fail to complete the project within that extension period, then the performance bond would come into play. And Ms. Hamm, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, then they are looking till the end of May for completion date then?
Yes, they're saying that as soon as the snow melts in March, they're expecting to start work. And at that time, 16 days to completion. So that would bring them ostensibly to, to the beginning of May.
But if the second, if the other lower bidder has the ability to complete this work currently without so many other projects ahead of them, wouldn't that be more beneficial?
That is ultimately a question for the elected officials.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we don't have any information from the second lowest bidder to be able to present to you tonight and any assurances in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Manfredi, you wanted to say something?
Ms. Hamm, the extension would not cause any deficiencies in, with, we expect the timeliness of any of our programs that were required. There would be, the, the extension would not cause any difficulties with the program?
No, the, the extension wouldn't have any negative impacts as far as our CDBG compliance, including timeliness, is considered. No?
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Schreiber.
I'm assuming that we did not speak to the other group, the second bidder. So we don't know if they can get it done or anything, or if they've taken on other projects or if they're behind because of the weather or any of those other things, right?
That's correct. Because this, this issue arose late this afternoon, we're just becoming aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. Cal, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to offer my, my, my thought based on my experience with this. I believe at this point, it does make sense for the Commissioners to entertain an extension. Because by the time you talk to the second or the next low bidder, by the time they go through the process, meeting the contract requirements, then it's going to be too late. And even them are going to have to wait until then. I personally have been down this road with other contractors, and it always worked good. I am very familiar with G&amp;B. They're a very reputable contractor. And I know they can do the job properly. I just want to put my, my two cents into it.
Thank you, Cal. Well, I think we, so Solicitor Gallagher, if you could provide us what the appropriate language would be?
Certainly. So there, there is a motion and a second on the floor to award the contract as is. If the board is of a mind and the individuals that made the motion and the second were to amend their motion to award the contract to G&amp;B Construction to complete the CDBG-funded Old Welsh Road Sidewalk Improvement Project in the amount of $350,000 and grant an extension for completion through the end of May 2023 would be the appropriate motion.
Okay.
As the maker of the motion, I would amend it as stated by the Solicitor.
Second.
Okay.
The original secondder of the motion would have to concur.
True, you have to do that.
Are you concurring in Mr. Bahe's amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we have one opposed. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Next item of new business is BOC-06101322. Motion to advertise an ordinance for a zoning text amendment to create the AR Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay District and a zoning map amendment to rezone certain parcels of the, on the northeast side of Fox Chase Road as AR Age-Restrict, Age-Restricted Carriage Home Overlay. And I say move.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board? Commissioner Rothman.
Manager Manfredi, can you just explain to those listening what procedurally this, basically what you helped me craft in the email the other day as to the process moving forward? If this were to be approved? Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. If the board were to pass this motion to create the amendment to the ordinance to allow the map and text amendment, that will give the property owner the ability to begin working on plans to submit a land development plan. That land development plan would have to be reviewed before the planning commission go through the entire subdivision land development process, be reviewed by engineering and all other agencies, including the county planning department, and ultimately be back in front of you here for consideration.
For those either listening down the road or here right now or watching on Zoom, obviously, we're talking about the property at St. Basil's Academy. So this is just another step in the process where this would be back before the board again in November, as I had explained in September, that there's just additional steps before we're actually discussing any actual submissions that address a lot of the concerns that were discussed at the meeting last month. So it's just another step in the process. If anybody has questions for me later, you can let me know, or now.
Any other comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC-07-101322. Motion to appoint candidates ranked 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 from the civil service eligibility list to the position of probationary police officer provided they successfully complete the background investigation, physical and psychological exams, and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and psychological exams, and all entry requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training effective October 31, 2022. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item of new business is BOC dash 08 dash 101322, motion to grant amended final subdivision approval for 629 Roslin Avenue such that the following additional waivers are granted with respect to newly created Lot 2, also known as 625 Roslin Avenue, tax map parcel number 30 dash 00 dash 59356 dash 01 dash 4, subject to addition set forth in the executive summary. And these are sections 146 dash 27A sidewalks, section 146 27F curbs. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you, President Hecker. I just wanted to speak on behalf of this item of business. This goes back originally to March 2019 when the resident subdivided a property, built a home, and at the time was required to install sidewalks and curbing. And the time is coming up during which she would have to complete that project. And we went back and took a look at some new information that the township has since then, including an updated stormwater management plan, and to take a look at whether or not right now it would make sense for the resident to continue installing the sidewalks and the curbing. Generally speaking, and as the resident is listening in tonight, so she's here, and she and I have been talking for quite a while, and generally speaking, as a matter of principle, I am, you know, in favor of sidewalks and curbing when people are doing construction. This particular situation, once we looked at the stormwater management plan and looked at the grading of the property and looked at where that particular block sits, it was determined through Tim Clark, through Manager Manfredi, and I certainly have no professional expertise in it, but I was looking at it and talking with all of them, it seems to make sense to not undo or grant a waiver from that requirement, but to at this time not require the resident to install the curbing and the sidewalk. It would be the only curbing, the only sidewalk on that portion of the block, and it does not look like there are plans in the stormwater management plan to install curbing or to install sidewalks there. So for the look of the block, it wouldn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to have that there. And there's no sort of perceived benefit to stormwater from doing that. What we have worked through, however, is because we have required this as part of the land subdivision, is that the language that you have in your packet is that at a future date, if in fact it is required through future stormwater management plans, that this property on this area, this block, would be required to install sidewalks or curbing, that the resident or the people who assume ownership of these properties would have to do it at that time. So the plan right now, or the hope, is to return approximately $14,000 in escrow to the resident and not require the installation of curbing and sidewalk at this time at this particular property. Again, I am 100% in favor of curbing and sidewalks as a general rule. This particular area we've dove into for the last several months and done some homework, and it just doesn't seem to make sense. So I'd like to humbly ask for your support of this. Manager Manfred, if there's anything I missed, I hope you'll add it.
No, sir, you've covered it well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC dash 09 dash 101322, motion to adopt ordinance number 2197, amending the code of township of Abington at Part 2, Chapter 146 subdivision of land development by amending and resetting Article 3, Plan Application Requirements, and Article 4, Plan Review Procedures, and adding Article 8, waiver of land development to create additional exemptions of the land development process, to create a process for notification of property owners and residents regarding the review of land development applications by the planning commission, and to create a process for a waiver of land development. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item of new business is BOC dash 10 dash 101322, motion to adopt the substantial amendments to the 2015, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021 CDBG annual action plans as presented at the July 14, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting. An ISO move.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And the final item of new business is BOC dash 11 dash 101322, motion to reject the 2022 recycling services paper hauling, processing, and marketing bids submitted by Newman &amp; Company on September 19, 2022, and authorize the township to participate in Montgomery County Recycling Consortium pending consortium approval. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions? Can we find out what this is about?
Yeah, for sure.
Manager Manfred, would you please provide a brief overview?
Certainly. There are two pieces to this motion, and I will be asking Public Works Director Jones to get into greater detail if you'd like. But as you recall, we had a contract with Newman Paper. That contract produced approximately $325,934 and 96 cents in revenues for our papers. We went back out to bid, as we are required to do, and when that bid came back in, the bids turned from $325,000 to a 295% decrease. And we're recommending that based on that decrease and the costs, that the contract be rejected and that we return to going through the Montgomery County Consortium as a member of the consortium, going to Republic Services. And that's what the motion is. And because we originally chose not to participate and go on our own with Newman, we're now having a request to participate. Mr. Jones, if you would get into a little bit more detail since you ran these numbers.
Yes, the bids went out in September and we received them. We feel that they got out to all the right vendors. 18 people viewed them, 14 people downloaded the documents, five attended our pre-bid meeting, but only one Newman Paper submitted a bid. And we feel that it was extremely lower than what we had expected, so therefore, we were recommending that we reject this bid. We, looking at the consortium contract that we're already a part of for our co-mingled plastics, there is a much higher value to taking our paper and cardboard to Republic as opposed to Newman. So we're very comfortable recommending this move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Schreiber?
Will there be any lag if we go between that time that, since we're not taking this and we're going to go with the consortium, is there going to be a lag time between contracts?
There would be a smooth transition. We're already working with Republic and we already haul our co-mingled plastics to them. So we would just stop having our paper hauled to Newman and we would start taking it to Republic.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Vice President Veyhe?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is certainly disappointing, but if we are now moving to working with the consortium on our paper, I see no reason to continue separating paper from co-mingle recycling in this township. And if we do move forward with this, I would ask Dr. Jones and the manager to consider how we can make the process of sorting our recycling easier in this township. Maybe it's public information campaign. I don't know if we need to collect the bins back, but I know people would prefer to be able to throw everything in one bin, and I've always advocated that's not a good idea since we get so much money on our paper. If we're not doing that anymore, I think we should make this process more convenient for our residents.
We can certainly take a look at that and will.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Aye.
Well, that's not the time. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
That concludes the new business to the board, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Veyhe. We will now turn to the Finance Committee and Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, we have the Treasurer's Report. Is Mr. Blumenthal on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, time is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm going to start out with the real estate taxes collected for the month of September of 2022. We collected $26,979, which is below the prior year for September of 2021 by $9,509,451. We're at 97% for the year, 3% left. I see no issue with collecting more money coming in by the end of the year, which will give us at least the 98%, which we historically made by the end of the year, which is so typical of Montgomery County municipalities, and I've mentioned that before. Moving on to the monies received by the various departments of the township and deposited in the Republic Bank for the month of September. And year-to-date, for the month of September, we brought in $4,862,882, which is an increase over the prior year of $13,739. And if you look at the year-to-date, year-to-date, we brought in $74,001,006,900, which is an increase over 2021 in the amount of $6,437,212. That's my report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Any questions from board members in the boardroom? Any at home? Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal.
You're welcome.
Next up, item FC 01101322, motion to approve the August 2022 expenditures in the amount of $2,286,452.23, and wages and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,155,850.92, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as immature through the month of November 2022. An ISO move.
It has been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote?
Commissioners Brodsky? Rothman?
Yes.
Yiplasito?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Thompson?
Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Depone?
Yes.
Carswell?
Spiegelman?
Yes.
O?
Yeah.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bluman?
Yes.
Vice President Veyhe?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item FC 02101322, motion to select The Hartford as the life and disability insurance provider for the township effective November 1, 2022. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now open the meeting up for public comment on general matters of township business. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Dell, H U P L.
And my address is 1848 Ambler Road, Abington, PA 19001.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manfredi is paid at the same level as the governor of Pennsylvania. Why? Mr. Manfredi will not meet with residents and does not regularly come to work. Mr. Manfredi has created a hostile work environment in Abington. Even former employees are afraid to speak out. Why, Commissioners, is Mr. Manfredi's leadership style needed in Abington? Who is benefiting from Mr. Manfredi's leadership? Commissioners, why are you allowing Abington to be destroyed from the inside? Commissioners, I need to ask, how does rapid land development benefit you? As you're aware, I'm always available by phone or email. I'm waiting to hear from anybody. Mr. Hecker, you promised two months ago at the Commissioners' meeting that you would finally, that I would finally receive a call from you. You very much encouraged me to start a petition. You didn't even find it ironic that you were asking me to petition to get code enforcement and Mr. Manfredi to do their job. Since that initial contact, Mr. Hecker, you have never returned a call or many emails. None. Commissioners, why are residents that want commercial blight corrected treated with contempt by you? Lack of commercial code enforcement should be of urgent importance. Why are clean and safe streets actually controversial? Why is Briar Bush Nature Center being defunded? Residents say the dog park is not being maintained. The grass is overgrown and regularly not mowed. But I must say, the outside area of grass surrounding Mr. Manfredi's office is manicured. The bushes are perfect, beautiful effort with so many flowers. Stop giving the runaround. Start representing the residents, Commissioners, not yourselves. The only way that many people can attend these meetings is through Zoom. And of course, more participation in community government is important. So please do not destroy the ability of many people who are at home and would like to attend these meetings. Keep Zoom. As of now, changes to the website have made it impossible for residents to navigate information. And of course, we want easy access to information.
Ms. Kabel, please wrap up your comments. Your time has expired.
Is that all you care about?
No.
It seems that way. Mr. Veyhe, you are one of the worst I've ever spoken to.
Ms. Kabel?
He hung up the phone on me.
Your time has expired.
And told me, never call him. It's a quarter to eight at night. When can I call him? Apparently, never, because he didn't answer.
Ms. Kabel, please take your seat.
He has the smirkiest look. I don't know how you're vice president.
Thank you. Thank you. To the residents, thank you, appreciate it.
Are there other residents that wish to make comments? Mr. Rooney?
My name is Deb Burns. I live at 1953 Guernsey Avenue. I have to say, we have been fighting this street for the last 10 years. We have met with Mr. Spiegelman. We have met many times over the last 10 years. I have to say, I am very disappointed because when the 7-Eleven was out there, we got notified. When Nifty 50 got out, nobody was notified. We did hear some people got notified based on the state requirements. That zoning that had the variance, none of us knew about it, and we were very upset. We don't want a carnival out there. You're planning to do the development on Susquehanna and Old York. I understand it's a state road, and last time we met, that they were not going to do a left-hand turn. Where do they do the left-hand turn? Highland Avenue. I was told that there's no trucks that are supposed to be coming down. Guess what? Before the meeting last night, or two nights ago, that we met with Commissioner Spiegelman, guess who was coming down? USA Foods. Our residents are very upset that we were not notified. I think it's, how are we, you know, we've been asking for traffic, some kind of help, and we're not. You make this a one-way street, guess where they're all coming? Guess what? I'm not going on 611 at 5 o'clock at night. No way can you make a left-hand turn. No way can you make a right-hand turn. Where am I going? I'm coming into the township. You have, I live at the end of the corner. I understand that there is a lot of problems, you're trying to do this. But my concern is, in that report that was sent in Glen Side Paper, half of this information was false. Because you know what? The police cannot handle. At the opening, great, you have six months. We've been dealing with this for over 20 years. My husband has had that house. I've been living there for the last 15. I'd like to know what you're going to do for us. We have been fighting this nonstop. And for us not to get notification, and then the engineer said, well, the people were notified based on the state requirements. I don't believe it. Because we asked for the addresses. Somebody had it, but nobody said it. I'd like you to be transparent and look at us. This street has been a nightmare. We have children, we have residents, I have fought, we're fighting amongst each other just to park. I am now fighting to get Amazon off my lawn because they don't want to block the roadway. You're kidding me. I have FedEx every day coming to my house because of my husband's business. I don't want you on my lawn. Don't tell me you're not going to block the lawn, the street. I had to cut through Eckert or something. It was a one-way street. I sat there for 10 minutes. I knew what I was getting into. However, I don't want people coming up, driving on my lawn, ruining my lawn, going into my street, going into my driveway, ruining my lawn because you can't back out. I would like to make sure that we get notices. And I really am so disgusted, and so are the people on Guernsey Avenue. And I really am so disgusted, and so are the people on Guernsey Avenue.
We appreciate your comments. I'm going to follow up with Manager Manfredi and Commissioner Spiegelman to understand.
We met with Manfredi fifteen years ago. We met. The only way we could have gotten a one-way street, one way that we could get road, whatever, bumps, is if a child gets killed. I was told by that, by this township, by, I believe, Mr. Manfredi, and if I'm missing, maybe I have the wrong person.
Yeah.
The only way that anything's going to be done is if the child's get killed. That's why you have a stop sign on Rockwell.
We will follow up.
We don't want this.
Thank you.
I hope you get more response than I get at seven hundred petitions.
Are there other residents who wish to speak? Mr. Rooney?
Joe Rooney in Ardsley, and I'll try and start again. Hopefully I won't get interrupted. Citizen asked a question at the last meeting about public safety and the public actions of a commissioner. No names were mentioned. The question was directed to the president. You recognize another commissioner to comment, we'll call him Commissioner T. Commissioner T decided to attack the citizen by name for having the temerity to ask about a fight that occurred after leaving a bar in Jenkentown. The second commissioner, we'll call him Commissioner P, decided to pile on and insult that citizen. Two commissioners versus one citizen. In my world of flatter aviation, it's called a two-v-one, okay? When the citizen stood to face the attacker down, a third commissioner, we'll call him Commissioner K, started hollering, "Sit down, sit down." At that point, it was Commissioner T, Commissioner P, and Commissioner K, all piling on one citizen. Sounds a little like intimidation to me. What's going on? The president lost complete control of that meeting. You have published rules for, comment rules for citizens. Citizens are expected to follow the rules when commenting. Why does all the incivility come from the other side of the room? Just this evening, this young lady was talking, she was interrupted by more than one commissioner up here. She only has a limited amount of time. You didn't, you didn't stop it, you didn't control it. Why does, I'm sorry, I got that already. When Carol DeJoseph, Peggy Myers, and Wayne Luca ran these meetings, I don't remember problems like this. Something's wrong with how these meetings are being run, and the commissioners are happy with it. I don't understand that. I think it's a level of intimidation. I'm sorry to see it. People are afraid to speak because of what's happening from the board. It's not from the individuals. And finally, just this little side comment. If any of our elected commissioners have the Tinder app on your phone, delete it. If you have that trouble to the life, you need to resign and then seek help. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak before we move to Zoom? Okay, we will move to Zoom. Please allow the first resident in.
Trevor Lee, you're unmuted.
Thank you. My name is Trevor Lee. I live at sixteen oh one Upland Avenue in Jenkentown, Abington Township. How can the board or township begin exploring what it would take to enact the vision of a park space from the Noble TOD plan? And the reason that this is important for me is that visually, it's not the best relationship between my neighborhood and the Noble train station. It would be nice if that parking lot had a green-planted buffer to create a better threshold between the neighborhood and the station, and it would be a tremendous asset and benefit for those who have children in the neighborhood to have a park there. So just curious what the plans are, if any, to enact that TOD plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Nora Salzman, you're unmuted.
Hello, good evening. My name is Nora Salzman. I live at sixteen twenty-seven Upland Avenue, PA 19046. I am voicing my support for increased walkability and bikeability in our township. I have a young family, three-and-a-half-year-old and a three-month-old, and we bike commute to school and to groceries and pretty much everything. We, in fact, only got a car ten months ago. So we believe this township could be very bikeable and very walkable with a few improvements that we would strongly support, including making the corridor down Riddle to the fairway, have a sidewalk so it's walkable, so people can go to those businesses without having to drive, and bikeable, and any other improvements in the neighborhood for recreation or for commuting. So I would be in support of that and how we could get that studies or wherever needed to get it in budget to start making those improvements, starting with what I think is a relatively minor one down Riddle.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Ross Abel, you're unmuted.
Hi, Ross Abel, Upland Avenue. Also, would love to support that plan as in the TOD for the green space at Noble Station. I don't know if we would need to, I imagine conversations already happened with SEPTA as part of the TOD study originally, but I would love if there was some way that we could kick off exploration of how that can actually be enacted. Just speaking with a lot of our neighbors, green space is one of the biggest asks that we don't have direct access to. So that would be great if we could get the support of the township. Separately, we have the EAC support, and I know multiple of the commissioners, it would be great to get budgeted in to update the master plan for the bike master plan, to give more protection for cyclists. Right now, the existing one doesn't go deep enough to actually recommend a protection with temporary ballards or flexible ballards, that sort of thing. And so I would love for us to get an updated plan and support from you guys. Separately, I would love to ask the board to update our ADU code to make it more flexible for our homeowners with such a lack of housing, giving homeowners the capability of utilizing an ADU as an income stream or to house family in or aging family. I think it would be great for us to give more homeowners flexibility in the code. And yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Meadowbrook. So I agree with most of the speakers. There is, you know, the problem with the last one is the TODs and the fact that all of Abington doesn't understand what you're planning for the TODs. Before I get into the details, Mr. Hecker, I want to tell you that you're on notice. That was slander at the last meeting. You actually said that I was lying and in an effort to destroy my reputation so that people don't listen to the things I say. And in fact, you were the one who was wrong and telling an untruth. The residents had just got done telling you that they were not properly being heard, and you have heard it again and again and again. So you're on notice for slander. I also, I also want to say that Zoom is very, very important. We need people to be able to come to these meetings without getting a babysitter to sit through a three-hour meeting when they only have three minutes at the end of the deal. So really, please do not let Zoom go. And I think you probably all know that somebody at the high school just died of COVID. COVID is not over, and families like my own have underlying conditions that make Zoom very important. I believe that what I just mentioned about not telling everybody through Abington what you're doing in the comprehensive plan around shopping centers and around train stations is disgusting. You need to get that information, what you're doing. It's even been removed from the comprehensive plan materials, and the map's been removed. So you need to get that material into the hands of the residents so they can protect their property rights. You know you are trying to turn our shopping centers into apartment complexes and turn our train station neighborhoods into triplexes and duplexes, and they don't know that. Even Highland Avenue that fought not to have commercial, that's on the table again, apparently. And well, and we can't get answers. So, you know, we can't get answers. That was mentioned at a meeting, and I asked about it, and I can't get an answer. So that's a huge problem. Mr. Manfredi has been asked for a meeting. He has, literally, they answered when I prompted them again after six days, and the answer was clear, that they hadn't even read the request. I was told that I could see Ms. Herman about budget issues. I want to talk to Mr. Manfredi. I told him that at a meeting. I wrote it in an email. And there is absolutely no accommodation for residents, and we have so much in this township that is just getting screwed up.
Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Please conclude your comments. No, you're out of order. Please sit down.
Why? I have something else to say. You should not be on the cell phone when others are talking.
We will call in the next resident.
Hamam Eldori, you're unmuted.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I'm Hamam Eldori, Upland Avenue, Noble 19046. As you can probably tell by my accent, I'm a very new resident here. And a comment and a question to the Board of Commissions. I recently found out that there was a public path for pedestrians and cyclists that ran along the rail tracks from Noble to Eastern that was planning, at least ostensibly, to bolster and foster business relations, community relations between the two neighborhoods. And I was wondering, or I'd like to know from the, from the BOC, whether the township is planning on reconsidering that pedestrian and cycle pathway. As, suffice it to say, I think it would be a fabulous addition to the neighborhood, and I currently strongly believe it would foster a stronger relationship between the two areas and facilitate easier access, especially in the warmer seasons where people are more inclined to walk and cycle from one neighborhood to the next. I would also like to strongly second the comments of the first three Zoom speakers, and I would also like to second the point that was made by the previous speaker on the Zoom. It would be greatly beneficial to the democratic nature and health of the township that Zoom was still used, so I strongly support that as well, and I hope that we don't get rid of Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir. And before we go on to the next resident, let me just address the Zoom issue. I'm not sure what the concern, there is no intent on the part of the board to do away with the virtual participation option for residents. It's just that clear. We can bring in the next resident.
Eric, you're unmuted. Eric, you're unmuted. You have to unmute yourself.
Yep, sorry about that. This is Eric Kirchner at sixteen eighteen Upland. I also just want to express my interest in moving forward the plan for the green space at Noble Station. There's a large number of kids in the area, the surrounding area here, and we don't have direct access to a green space. It would be a great improvement to the neighborhood. So with that, I just want to say I appreciate everything you do for the community and have the ability to call into these meetings via Zoom.
Thank you. Commissioner Weingrad, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to ask for those folks on Upland, that's Ward Seven, if you could get in touch with me offline here. I'd like to explore all your ideas a little, a little further, in more detail. Thanks. So please, you know, email me to get in touch with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. And with that, we are adjourned.